The Public Safety Committee meeting for...
Remnants of it.
Yeah, the remnants of, yeah. You got something on your lapel there, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I know. It's called a rose bowl. Some of you guys never play. End of the season.
Continue this outside afterwards, okay? It is December 8th, 2008. I'm Jack Weiss. Greg Smith is here with me. Other members may or may not come. At least one was out sick today. And do we have a potential consent item, Ms. Thengel?
Two.
Item two is... What's that?
Item two.
Watch it. Watch it. Wow. Wow.
Highly armed.
I know. That's hostile work. Captain Cremins, speak now or forever hold your peace. He's not here?
No, Detective Bureau is sitting on behalf of... Not sitting around.
Well, I think we want to approve him and pass this on. Anything that you want to add about it, Mr. Smith?
Just watch your budget.
So with "watch your budget," we'll send it on to the full council. Appreciate that. Okay, that'll be item two. Item one, please, Mr. Weiss.
Item one, Police Department to present verbal report relative to the status of DNA testing, backlog, and cold hits and other DNA-related matters.
Morning, Commander.
Good morning. Commander Pat Gannon from Detective Bureau.
Chief Forensic Chemist Jeff Thompson from the SRLB DNA unit here for commanding officer Yvette Sanchez Owens of SID.
And David De Liberto with RHD Cold Case Section.
Good morning. Thanks for being here. Take it away.
Thank you. Chief Beck was pulled away this morning, and he asked me to sub for him. I know I'm not a good replacement, but I'll try to do my best. The inventory of the freezers, as you know, Councilman, you were over there as you watched us in and out of those freezers in Piper Tech, has been completed. We're now doing the data entry and rectifying which kits in the freezers appeared to have been analyzed already against lists that have been provided to us from SID. We hope to have, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have finished that particular part of the process in order to rectify all of the numbers. As you know, when Detective Bureau took over this particular project, the chief was very interested in making sure that our count and the count that we would give you each week was absolutely accurate. And so the best way we felt to do that was to do this inventory, which entailed a lot of work by a lot of people dressed in their winter garb in those Sub-Zero freezers to make sure that we have it. And so we've completed that portion of it, and now we have...
The portion that you completed is cataloging by hand every item that was in those freezers?
Yes, every item that was in those freezers.
How many items total?
Over 50,000 pieces of evidence were counted in the last three weeks.
And once again, just for the record, in case anyone is listening to you and wants to understand the context, explain why there are 50,000 pieces of evidence, but that doesn't mean 50,000 rape kits.
Yeah, that's correct. There's a number of items that are frozen as pieces of evidence. The vast majority of the evidence that was in the freezers had to do with murder investigations, might have been blood, might have been other types of things that had been collected that needed, from a forensic standpoint, to be frozen. So you're right. It is not 50,000 rape kits. Those are a whole host of different types of evidence, and much of it quite old that we have to, by law, hang on to. So now, just deciphering that and going through that and making sure our numbers are absolutely correct so that we can come before you with absolute numbers with absolute certainty as to what we have.
Thank you for that. The next stages and about how long you think they take in terms of the cataloging?
The next piece is to pull out of the data that we collected, to pull every rape kit dating back to 1997, and to count those rape kits that are in those freezers, compare that against the list that Property Division has given us that says what should be in property, and then compare that against the list that Scientific Investigation Division has shown what has been analyzed and what has not been analyzed, to get a good idea of how many untested rape kits we actually do have in there.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Gentlemen?
To update the backlog numbers, the number of rape kits requested for analysis but not yet completed currently stands at 199. All other requests, in other words, other types of serological examinations, as far as backlog, is 284. Both those numbers are down a little bit from the previous week. The rape kits in property that do not have a formal request from a detective for analysis is 6,519, and the total number of rape kits booked into property so far in 2008 is 866.
Thank you. Are you speaking?
For the week ending November 30th, we had five DNA hits come in, which compared to zero for the same timeframe in 2007. That brought our total for the year up to 239, which is an 18% decrease from the previous year when we had 292. So that's a 12% decrease in homicide hits, a 9% decrease in sexual assault hits, and a 32% decrease in burglary and robbery hits. And of the 239 total hits, RHD is handling 36% of them.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, do you have any questions on the numbers?
Just on the rape kits, have we done an analysis, or maybe this is the next phase of looking at which of those rape kits have little chance of going forward, victim doesn't want to pursue it any at this point, or there may be other circumstances, I don't know, but moving them to a second level, maybe?
There will be some investigations. In addition to comparing the information against what our SID has in their list, we also have to do, I'm sure you're familiar with it, DCTS, which is the Detective Case Tracking System. We have to go through each one of the cases and see where that case is. There is, to upload information into CODIS, the DNA CODIS, there's a list of rules you have to follow. Some of that will be, to make sure that we're following those rules correctly, we'll have to look at the case status to see what the status of that particular case was. There are some cases, for some examples, unfounded cases, where it was later determined that there was not a rape that would not qualify for CODIS, and we have to rectify all of that.
So that's a later...
That's a later part, yes.
Later test.
Okay, good. Well, thank you again for, not just the weekly presentation, but thank you again for how hard you and the leadership of the LAPD and the men and women who I saw working on these. They worked the cases in RHD, and they worked the cases in tabulating all those items of evidence. It's extraordinary effort that you're going through. It really shows the LAPD's commitment to this issue. I appreciate it, and I hope and believe the people of the city appreciate what you're doing with respect to these crimes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, Mr. Weiss, I think, Ms. Thengel, wish your items four to 10 together. Three, okay, three is being continued or has been continued. Either way, no, three?
Yes.
So let's call four through 10. Is that correct?
Yes.
So call them away, please, and...
Items four through 10?
Yes, please.
Item four, City Attorney Report and Ordinance Relative to Including Illegal Possession of Use or Weapons and Ammunition on the Premises or Within 1,000 Feet of a Rental Property as Grounds for Eviction of Tenant by Landlord Pursuant to Motion Weiss-Hahn-Garcetti. Item five, City Attorney Report and Ordinance Relative to Banning the Possession and Sale of 50-caliber Cartridges and Ammunition Pursuant to Motion Weiss-Garcetti-Perez-Reyes. Item six, City Attorney Reports and Ordinances Relative to Requiring Ammunition Vendors to Obtain a License to Sell Ammunition Pursuant to Motion Weiss-Garcetti-Hahn. Seven, Motion Smith-Zion Request that the City Attorney Prepare an Ordinance to Provide for the Permanent Seizure of Vehicles Used by Known Gang Members While Committing a Crime. Item eight, City Attorney Reports and Ordinances Requiring Ammunition Sales to Be Conducted Face-to-Face, Thumbprints of Purchasers, and Background Checks for Employees Handling Ammunition Pursuant to Motion Weiss-Wezar. Item nine, City Attorney Report and Ordinance Relative to Banning the Installation of a Secret Compartment of Vehicles to Hide Firearms Pursuant to Motion Gurul-Zion. And item 10, City Attorney Reports and Ordinances Relative to Requiring Gun Dealers Located Within the City of Los Angeles to Perform Physical Inspections of Their Inventories Twice a Year, Send a Sworn Affidavit of These Inspections to the Police Department, and Report Any Missing or Sold Guns Pursuant to Motion Wezar-Weiss.
Okay, I think we have the City Attorney's Office here, a number of deputy city attorneys. Why don't you all come forward first to walk us through the proposed ordinances? I see we have the mayor's office here as well, and Ms. Cordero, if you want to speak, you should feel free to. We have representatives from leading gun violence prevention organizations here, Women Against Gun Violence and Legal Community Against Violence. We have Mr. and Mrs. Foster who are here as well. I think if they want to make a statement, we'll get you the public comment card just so we can get that in. Perfect. So that's the order in which we'll proceed. I want to thank the City Attorney's Office. It was, I don't remember when, but it was spring, summer of 2008, I'm not sure, when Mr. Smith and Mr. Del Godillo and the mayor and Mr. Wezar, I believe, and I joined the Chief of Police and the United States Attorney on the steps of City Hall to announce this package. And the City Attorney's Office is here today with the ordinances that are the result of that announcement a little while back. So why don't you take it away and walk us through?
Good morning. Heather Aubrey, City Attorney's Office. I'll be addressing item numbers five, six, and eight.
Good morning, council members. Brian Satelli with the City Attorney's Office. I'll be addressing item number four with also the assistance of Assistant Asha Greenberg on that issue. I will also be addressing item number nine and 10.
And why don't you go just in order of the items on the agenda so that we don't make it too completely crazy, complicated to follow? And we have public comment cards on item four. I'll bring up all the public speakers after we've heard about all the items. So we'll hear the presentation about all the items, any other representatives from agencies or officials, and then we'll hear all the public comment cards at the same time. And if any of you want to speak, just fill out a card and give it to Mr. Weiss, just because I don't want to call you up unless you want to be up here participating. Take it away.
Yes. On item number four, again, my name is Brian Satelli, Deputy City Attorney. This issue was a motion that was requested by Councilmember Weiss to amend the existing Los Angeles Municipal Codes 151.09 and 4750 to include possession or use of weapons and ammunition on premises and within 1,000 feet of property as grounds for an eviction. As I indicated earlier, I worked in conjunction with our Assistant City Attorney, Asha Greenberg, who's here today to field questions, if you may, as to the proposed amendments to the ordinance. I just want to point out that the motion did indicate there is an existing state law, Civil Code Section 3485, which allows nuisances to be abated for conduct involving unlawful weapons or ammunition. However, pursuant to 3485, the Civil Code subsection F4, it allows local governments to duplicate or even supplement the existing state law. So we're allowed, under the state law, to enact such an ordinance. And what we're merely doing is we're amending the existing municipal codes which allow for evictions in these cases to include the language which Councilmember Weiss had indicated in the motion for unlawful weapons and also for ammunition. So if I could direct your attention to the existing Municipal Code 4750, which is entitled, the old section, which was entitled Narcotics, Violent Crime, and Gang-Related Crime Eviction Program, we amended the title to include unlawful weapons or ammunition crime as indicated in the proposal. In addition, within the body of 4750 subsection A, we defined what unlawful weapon or ammunition crime would be, which would include mirroring the state law definition, which includes legal use, manufacture, causing-to-be manufactured, importation, possession, possession-for-sale or sale, furnishing or giving away of ammunition, or any weapon that is listed in subdivision C1 through 5 of Section 3485 of the Civil Code. In addition to that, we felt it was necessary to clarify the language within the rental unit as indicated in our recent revised council report, just to clarify that the term rental unit also encompasses hotel and motel rooms subject to tenancy or transient occupancy. Our CNAP attorneys felt that was necessary and important to clarify that language. In addition to, if I could direct your section to 4750 subsection B, small i and double i, we also included the language unlawful weapon or ammunition crime to fit within those ambites of the ordinance.
So to summarize in a nutshell, this proposed ordinance will do what? Just to summarize.
What we'll do is we'll allow landlords an opportunity to evict tenants where there's an unlawful weapon or ammunition crime on the premises that occur within 1,000 feet of the rental unit, which, as the council members probably well know, that the previous law had just limited to narcotics, violent crimes, and other areas that are articulated within the body of the ordinance. This would broaden it to include unlawful weapons and ammunition crime.
And the City Attorney's ability to file for evictions is what, under the law? Ms. Greenberg? Good morning, Ms. Greenberg.
The City Attorney's ability to file eviction actions is under state law.
That's state law.
And so that would be under Civil Code 3485. What this amendment does is important because it adds the 1,000-foot radius to the property. In fact, we did have an arrest report in which some gang members took their weapons and went to their neighbor's yard, and were digging a hole and burying their weapons when, I won't draw any analogies, but were burying their weapons when the police came upon them. And so, under state law, that would not be a violation, but if this ordinance had been in effect, because it was within 1,000 feet of the premises where they resided, it would be a violation.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, if you have questions while they're presenting, and you want to ask the lawyers, go ahead, or we'll just run through them all.
Next one.
Okay. So thank you for that presentation on item four. And again, we'll have the public comment period after all the items are read. Item five, who's five? Ms. Aubrey?
Thank you. The draft ordinance you have before you regarding item number five is to add Section 55.19, 55.19, to the Los Angeles Municipal Code to ban the sale or transfer of ammunition for large-caliber firearms. Currently, what we have in our code is Section 55.18, which bans the sale or transfer of large-caliber firearms. This would ban, it's essentially a counterpart to that, in that it would ban the ammunition for these large-caliber firearms, and...
For the record, we're being joined by Councilmember Parks. Please continue, Ms. Aubrey. Mr. Parks, we're going through the gun control motions. Ordnances.
And large-caliber firearms, as defined in Section 55.18 currently, are defined as 50-caliber and higher. So again, this would ban the ammunition for those firearms and essentially act as a counterpart to our current ordinance, which bans those firearms. And it includes an exemption for blank ammunition used in the motion picture industry. It also includes an exemption for certain purchasers of this ammunition.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, we're rolling through the proposed ordinances with the city attorneys. Then we're going to hear public comment. If you want to ask a question of any ordinance as they propose it, you should feel free to ask. Item three has been continued. We've already done items one and two. We're on item five right now, which is the 50-caliber ammo ban. And we did item four, which was evictions. Item four was evictions connected with illegal weapons activities. What do you need?
I'm finding those forward five.
Okay, so, Mr. Smith?
Just one question on five. When the state law was passed on the large-caliber weapons, were there a grandfather clause that if you had had a legal possession prior to that, you still could maintain it, or it was retroactive?
I'm actually glad you raised that, because to clarify, this ordinance, this draft ordinance, does not ban possession of the ammunition. Like the existing 55.18, which bans the sale or transfer of the firearms themselves, this likewise only bans the sale or transfer of ammunition, not possession. So there's no need for the grandfathering in of legal possession. And essentially, again, this acts to ban the sale or transfer only.
Okay. So if you possessed it on the day of this ordinance, you can still, you can't transfer it, but you can still possess it?
That is correct.
Okay. So just stopping the future activity, which is admirable. I wish we could do more, but that's where we're at.
That's right.
All right, that's item five. Is it like pong? Okay.
It seems to be working.
All right. Item six, Mr. Satelli or Ms. Aubrey?
Actually, Ms. Aubrey's covering item number six.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I am also covering item number six. This is a draft ordinance you have before you to require ammunition vendors to obtain a license to sell ammunition pursuant to motion. And I would like to also cover this in conjunction with item number eight, which requires that ammunition vendors comply with certain requirements.
Sure. Cover it however you want to.
What we have before you is to clarify a revised draft ordinance with respect to adding Section 103.314.1 to the Municipal Code and amending Section 55.11 in conjunction with that. What this ordinance does is requires, as is currently required for firearm vendors, that ammunition vendors also obtain a permit from the City of Los Angeles, specifically the Board of Police Commissioners, in order to engage in that activity. Also, the vendors need to comply with certain requirements that are specified currently in 55.11. What we did, for the sake of streamlining this and making it clear, is we put those requirements that are currently imposed on seller or ammunition sellers within this ordinance, which creates the need for a permit to sell ammunition. And we create certain exemptions for certain purchasers of ammunition. And basically, this draft ordinance would require, like with firearms, that sellers of ammunition also obtain a permit and comply with certain requirements as set forth, including that the thumbprint be obtained, which is actually already required under 55.11, but it's clarified further, and also that the vendor obtained the information in a face-to-face transaction. And also, it provides a clearer definition of firearm ammunition than we previously had.
Are any of these requirements in place now for the sale of ammunition?
Yes. Specifically, the requirement that a thumbprint be obtained is currently required under 55.11. What's made clearer and is essentially required now is that ammunition vendors obtain a permit in order to sell ammunition. And in order to maintain that permit, they must comply with these requirements that are currently set forth in 55.11. So what 103.314.1 does is cross-references 55.11, makes it clear that ammunition vendors must also comply with 55.11 in order to maintain their permit.
Got it. And is that six or eight that you just walked us through?
That is actually a combination of six and eight. Six, again, requires that ammunition vendors obtain a permit from the Board of Police Commissioners to sell ammunition. Item number eight requires that the sales be conducted face-to-face, that the thumbprints of purchasers be obtained, and also that background checks for employees handling ammunition be conducted.
Six and eight, clear to...
Now, I have a question on eight. On the exemptions?
Yes.
When it talks about item G2 exemptions, any off-duty peace officer who displays proper agency identification which condemns him or her as an active peace officer, is that as defined under all Section 30 of the Penal Code, which is a police officer status?
The definition of a peace officer is defined in the Penal Code, so that encompasses...
Well, there's a distinction drawn sometimes for reserve police officers who are active, and I want to make sure it includes 30.6, because as a police, reserve police officer, I'm an active police officer, but I'm not allowed the exemptions on purchasing a gun, that the regular full-time officers are, just because nobody caught it. And so I want to make sure that reserve officers have the ability to buy ammunition as well as active-duty, full-time peace officers, and that we include 30.6 as well as... Bernard, what are the other sections that may be peace officer status, like...
I think it's 830 and 832.
830, 832, yeah. But then we get to the other officers of other departments that are sometimes, like the airport is 830.4 or something like that?
Several limited status.
Yeah. So if you could check for me that all the sections of 830 are in this exemption, I think we're okay, because years ago when they passed the ban on buying firearms, they exempted 830.2, which is active-duty officers, and didn't exempt port police, didn't exempt airport police, didn't exempt reserve police officers. So I think we need to fix that in this ordinance then, if you could.
I will clarify that, council member.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think so. They're 830.3 or something.
So just to be clear, what precisely do you want to...
I want them just to make sure that all sections of 830 of the Penal Code are in this exemption, not just the identification of active duty, because then you miss a lot of departments, our own city departments.
So is that, that type of work you can do between now and the time the matter comes to council, and if for some reason something needs to be added, we can, I'm sure we, that would be a...
Absolutely. I do believe this mirrors the language of 103.314, which is why we essentially mirrored it, to make it consistent with the firearm seller permit ordinance. That said, I certainly will look into it and...
Check in it, because I know it was not caught in the state legislation.
Okay.
So there's a problem there.
Okay, so that's six and eight, which means we're now at seven, which is...
One thing on six and eight. I think the previous document we've received is that LAPD does an annual audit of all gun stores in the city, and I'd just like to make sure with these new ordinances, is the audit to their inspection schedule?
With respect to item numbers six and eight, the auditing requirement was not an aspect of either of those motions. I'm sorry?
But I'm just saying, they have, as part of their gun detail, they audit every gun store in the city of L.A. annually.
I do believe that is something that the gun unit of the department currently does.
With these new ordinances, that we ask them to add these to their audit program, so they're auditing that people are complying with the new ordinance.
Yes. I would expect that they would ensure compliance with these new requirements, yes. Thank you.
All right, so if we just did six and eight, then we do item seven, which was a Smith motion, correct? No? Yes?
Which one's seven?
Seven is vehicles.
Yes, and I'll be covering that. So this is a draft ordinance which adds Section 41.71 to the Los Angeles Municipal Code, providing for the seizure and forfeiture of vehicles used in the commission of gang-related crimes and gang injunction violations. Since February 2008, the city attorney has brought 36 injunctions against gang members in the city, and we anticipate obtaining additional ones in the future. These injunctions apply to certain designated areas characterized as safety zones where the gangs are most active. And this particular ordinance provides for the seizure and forfeiture of offenses that are committed in violation of the Street Terrorism Enforcement and Prevention Act, known as the STEP Act, or for certain activity that occurs in a safety zone. So it's really a two-category ordinance. The STEP Act offenses include crimes like unlawful homicide, robbery, assault with deadly weapon, rape, kidnapping, grand theft, et cetera. Offenses that involve control violations are specifically excluded because of preemption concerns. The second category involves violation of gang injunction committed by gang members who have notice of the injunction and are subject to the injunction and the offenses committed in a safety zone. So it applies to offenses that include gang members who are in the presence of other gang members in violation of the injunction, possession of graffiti tools, and possession of firearms or ammunition. The ordinance provides for notice to all persons who have an interest in the vehicle. The ordinance also provides for a post-seizure hearing at which the hearing officer can decide to return the vehicle if certain circumstances... the vehicle if certain circumstances are met. At the hearing on the forfeiture, the vehicle can also be returned to innocent owners if the registered owner can show that they were not present when the offense was committed. The registered owner did not know that the vehicle was going to be used in that manner, and that the registered owner was not negligent in providing the vehicle to the individual who committed the offense. Even if the violation is used in, if the vehicle is used in violation of this section, the court can also, in lieu of forfeiture, impound the vehicle for thirty days, up to hundred and twenty-one days, if certain criteria are met. So all of the circumstances are provided for in the ordinance. So essentially, the ordinance provides for seizure and forfeiture, but there are provisions in the ordinance for returning the vehicle to the innocent owner prior to the hearing on the forfeiture, and also after there is a hearing on the forfeiture, which must be held within thirty days of the claim being filed. So it's, it's kind of a long ordinance, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to clarify it.
Mr. Smith, do you have any?
Yeah, so this is very narrowly defined. I think that's important distinction. It's very narrowly defined to those gang injunction areas. Is this only going to be realistically enforced by the gang units, or will patrol officers know that this is available to them and know where those boundaries are?
I think that we are contemplating that it's going to be used mostly by gang units, because certainly the ones that involve the gang injunction areas, the gang officers are going to be familiar with those areas and the gang members. The ones that are in violation of the STEP Act, that applies citywide. So there is a potential there if, you know, a gang member is arrested for one of these listed crimes, that it could also be handled by a patrol officer, because even after the crime is committed, one can always go back and seize the vehicle.
Is, I don't know if anyone's here can answer, but is LAPD going to do a roll-call training on this, so the officers know this tool's available to them, particularly in South Bureau and some of the other areas where they have the majority of the gang injunctions?
Yes, we can certainly work with LAPD to provide roll-call training.
Thank you.
Let me just ask, and the one area I had a concern about, and I see the hearings take care of that, what do we do about an individual, or how do we distinguish an individual that just blatantly does not register their vehicle, but that they fit all the other criteria of being a gang member versus a legal owner and a, a non-involved registered owner?
The ordinance provides for notification to anyone who has an interest in the vehicle on record with DMV. And so those individuals would be notified. If there are individuals who have some other interest in the vehicle that is, no one knows about, that is a little bit more difficult to address, because, you know, those claims can also, of course, be manufactured. So the ordinance only really covers those individuals who have a registered interest in the vehicle, either as a legal owner or as a registered owner, or some other recorded interest.
But if the, if the registered owner is someone that's so, you know, as we do with these vehicles, they trade hands a number of times and never quite get registered, how do we unravel that to distinguish that it's a blatant effort not to register versus someone is legitimately a non-involved legal owner?
It's very difficult to really unravel that web. If someone just has an interest, but it's not recorded anywhere, and no one really knows about it, it's hard to reach that person unless we have some evidence of their interest and involvement.
So if we go to the legal owner or registered owner, and they say, "I sold it seven months ago," I mean...
Then if that person is the driver, certainly we would be able to proceed against that person. But if, if there's no, you know, interest that's evident to us, then we can't reach that interest.
But if the driver's not the person that the person, I mean, how do we, that's what we find in a lot of these vehicles. They get sold three or four times before someone finally gets around to registering. You know, the paperwork catches up with the cycle of sale. And, and the issue I'm trying to figure out is if you, if someone that's a registered owner declares they sold it, yet someone didn't go and register it, or they sold it before they re-registered, how does, how does that get resolved?
Well, if they have any interest, we would work with them on resolving it. We've had this issue come up before when we did the other forfeitures, you know, involving prostitution, et cetera. There would be sort of phantom owners out there who would surface. But as far as our notification to them is a little difficult, because we don't know who they are. But sometimes the driver who's driving the vehicle will let them know, hey, you know, the reason you haven't gotten your vehicle back is because the city now has it. Then that person will contact us, and we would characterize them as an innocent owner if they could really establish their interest.
All right, thank you.
So that's item seven? Seven. Okay, item nine? Yes, council? Gun compartment?
Item number nine I'll address. It was a request by councilmembers Gruehl and Zine to ask our office to draft an ordinance banning the installation of secret compartments in vehicles to hide firearms. And the basis of this motion articulated from the motion itself was that the vehicles are being used as tools to commit gun crimes, drive-by shootings, storing and transferring of guns and ammunition. There's been a recent trend to install and use secret compartments in vehicles to hide firearms and circumvent an officer's ability to search for weapons. I might point out to the councilmembers that in my council report, I indicated that there is a, currently, there's a pending state law, AB 278, which is, which addresses Health and Code Section 11366.8, which is also a false and secret compartments for controlled substances. So what they wanted to do, the state legislature is trying to expand and broaden that Health and Safety Code to include unlawfully possessed firearms or destructive devices. However, it's still pending. It's, it hasn't gone into law yet. And so we went ahead and drafted the ordinance. The City of L.A. does not have this type of an ordinance, so we had to create a new section, which is 55.20, which entitled "False or Secret Compartment in Vehicles to Hide Unlawfully Possessed Firearms." And we use the AB 278 as a model in our drafting of the ordinance. I might point out that within the body of fifty-two, fifty-five twenty subsection A4, we define the term destructive device, which as defined in the Penal Code 12301, deals with bombs or grenades or explosive missiles. However, destructive device was not originally requested in councilmembers Gruehl and Zine's motion. However, we left the language in there, and I come to you today to see whether or not you want us to either strike the language, or if you want the language included, then we can include it within four, four subsection B, where we define unlawful possession of weapons, to also include destructive devices.
I'm sure Ms. Gruehl and Mr. Zine would want that to be in. So that's, that's a very good idea. Appreciate the city attorney's office making that suggestion.
Okay. And then I might add, since we have the language in there, we may have to modify subsection 4B to include the unlawful possessed firearms or destructive device language. And we'll, we can prepare that in front of the city council if you'd like.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions on this item?
Just one question. How do you determine if there's not a gun in the, or a destructive device in the compartment, that it was designed for that use? I know there are jewelry dealers, precious metal dealers that have hidden compartments in their cars. So let's assume some guy is a jewelry dealer and has a compartment. It's empty at the time. How do you know that that was designed for a gun, not jewelry?
Well, it's a good question. It depends on what the intent was. You also have to show that it's for an unlawful purpose. You know, having a lawful weapon, as you know, under Penal Code Section 1202.6.1, you can have it stored in a locked container, or as long as it's lawfully possessed. So you would have to show that the designer...
So this would be used in conjunction, probably with another, another legal arrest of some sort as an add-on, more likely?
Exactly. That would be.
Okay. Item nine. So item ten, please.
Yes, councilmembers, I'll be addressing item number ten. Item number ten deals with the physical inventory inspections. And this was a motion that was requested by councilmembers Quezar and Weiss. And it requests our office to draft an ordinance whereby three criterias would be met. One would require city gun dealers to perform physical inspections of their inventory twice a year. Two, to send the sworn affidavits of the inspections to the LAPD. And three, to require reporting of any missing or stolen guns. The reasons as articulated in the motion itself was that due to ATF studies of firearm trafficking, it was found that firearm dealers associated with the largest number of trafficking of guns, and that there is definitely a threat to public safety when these guns are out in the public, and there's no, no one to inventory them. Also, there's been an increase in inventory accountability this ordinance would provide to LAPD to investigate gun thefts more quickly and root out rogue gun dealers. So a decision was made by our office to, instead of creating a completely new ordinance, we would amend the existing 103.314, which deals with the sale of firearms, which regulates firearm dealer permits, to include this within those provisions. And upon reviewing 103.314, I might point out, we found that there should be a technical amendment to the subsection N2 section, which deals with conditions of employment by permittees. We noticed that within that section, it cited to a provision 103.02 within the ALMCO that, that deals with fees and fingerprints and information that's required on application to be processed by the board. However, it should truly reflect 103.02.1, which is the heading where the fees and the fingerprints are required. It's just a technical amendment. However, I wanted to bring that to you, because the main body of the motion dealt with the physical inventory inspections, which we created a whole provision, subsection R, within the 103.314. And within the new section, we created a new heading, which is entitled "Physical Inventory Inspections." And we indicated that these inspections have to be done within the first five business days of April and October, and that the, it requires a perithee to take a physical inventory of their firearms, and that they, as indicated in the, in the provision, they also have to include a list of the firearms that have been lost or stolen, as required under Penal Code Section 1271. B13. They have to keep a list or a copy of the inventory on premises, so when LAPD does go and investigate, they have to have, show them. Then it also requires them to send this copy of the inventory to the LAPD, that being the Police Board of Commissions, who regulates these types of permits that are given to firearm dealers. In addition, the perithee has to include an affidavit that's signed that said that they did do the inventory. I might point out that we, we had submitted an earlier draft in August of this year, which included not only the items that were inventoried, they're in the dealer's inventory section, but items that had been sold between the two periods. After looking, going back and looking at the original motion, the motion just dealt with inspections of their inventories and did not cover periods outside of the inventory periods. So we struck that language, and just wanted to bring it to the council, to your attention. If you want us to include the language back, we could, more than happy to do that. However, we felt that the original intent of the motion just dealt with inventory that is within the dealer's possession at the time. Inspection's done.
Okay. Any comments or questions on item ten?
Yeah, just a couple. What about movie props?
Yes, they would be covered under 103.314, so they would be required to...
If they're working weapons or just?
Yes. As, as long as they have to get a permit under 103.314, then they have to comply with...
So a working weapon?
Yes.
Okay. And then also, and question maybe to Mr. Weiss, really, I'm looking in the language here, and it talks about that in a timeframe in the 1990s, identified eighty-four thousand firearms were diverted illegally. ATF found that firearm dealers were associated with the largest number of trafficking, trafficking at guns, forty thousand. Do we know that those were intentional trafficking, or illegal activities, or they just lost weapons and from inventory that weren't recorded? Because my impression is that, from what I've seen, is firearm dealers, when they get a gun stolen, they report them pretty quick, because they don't want to be associated with that gun if it's picked up in illegal use. The ones that are trying to hide the use are going to hide the use anyway. And I'm just wondering, are we, are we really going to catch much by doing this?
Well, let's, we have, we have some, I think we have some public speakers from the gun violence advocacy community, and, and we'll give them the chance to address that and any of the other issues that have been raised. Is there something you want to say, Mr. Sotill?
No, no, you're...
So why don't we, we have representatives from the Legal Community Against Violence and Women Against Gun Violence. Did you all want to offer comments on any of these things? Why don't you come forward, please? I think, I think, why don't we, why don't we actually ask Ms. Aubrey and Mr. Sotill to stay here, and then you guys, the advocates, can stay here, just so that the attorneys are present if, if they care to respond. Will we grab another, grab another chair?
Mr. Weiss, two minutes?
Uh, yeah, we'll, sure, but it'll be tooish.
Okay. Good morning. I didn't fill out my card.
Well, why don't, why don't you pull the microphone closely and tell everyone who didn't read your non-existent card who you are, if they don't know.
There we go. Okay. Good morning. My name is Ann Rice Lane. I'm the founder and chair of Women Against Gun Violence. We're fifteen years old, and this coming year, and very proud of the work we've done with the city council and with the state legislature, and very hopeful about the coming year with a change in Washington, that we will, in fact, be able to do things like reinstate the assault weapon ban. I want to thank the committee, Jack in particular, for his leadership on issues of gun violence, and we're very proud to have been invited to come and testify today. For those of you who don't know very much about us, we are a nonprofit advocacy group. We train many people to become speakers who have themselves experienced gun violence or lost a loved one. We make presentations to schools and community organizations. And we have a, an advocacy program. And if I may, I would like to introduce one of our board members, Rhonda Foster. And she has a special message for this committee today.
Welcome, Ms. Foster. If you could just pull the microphone close to you.
Good morning. This Monday, this is today, Monday, December eighth. Monday, December eighth, nineteen ninety-seven, our family's lives were changed forever. I had taken my son Evan and Alec was with us to Darby Park to pick up his soccer trophy. And upon our leaving, some gang members had come to the park. There was a shooting in Los Angeles that involved some of their members, and they were seeking to retaliate and had determined, they couldn't find the people responsible. They determined, they wanted to kill someone. They came to the park. Person parked next to me, the color of his car was red, their rival color. They decided they were going to shoot him. They had a MAC-90 assault weapon. This is similar to what that gun looks like. Seventy-five rounds were shot from that, that gun, about fourteen of which hit my vehicle, and two of which hit Evan. He was killed instantly. These are some pictures. This is only, Captain Yon, he got to where he would have graduated from high school this year. And Alec was ten months. He sustained bullet fragment to his eye and had to have a cornea transplant and his lens removed. So I am speaking on behalf of the banning of the ammunition, fifty-caliber ammunition, to learn that these young people had this type of weapon, and that many bullets were released in a matter of a couple minutes. I was appalled, shocked, you know, that this is in our society. And, you know, this absolutely should not be. And learning that this was occurring today on the, you know, eleventh anniversary, exactly, Monday. Monday, December 8th, I was compelled to come speak on behalf of Evan. We discovered this poem that he wrote, two years after he had passed, and just want to share with you. He wrote, "I know a place. I know a place where things will grow, see, hear, walk, and talk. I know a place where things will eat, sing, play, smell, think, and read. The place is surfing in the USA home." That's what he knew. And that's what our children should know. I have wanted to thank our son Alec, he's eleven now, he's doing very well. He had the opportunity to speak for the Women Against Gun Violence last year, and I brought his speech to share with you all.
Thank you. Thank you for being here this morning, Ms. Foster. I have to tell you that we, you know, it's actually rare when we are passing legislation or considering legislation like this to meet somebody like you who's gone through anything close to what you've gone through, and it's very meaningful so that not members of the committee, I mean, we have the chief of police and a police officer here on this committee, but members of the public need to understand how important this is, and your strength is what enables people to understand that.
Thank you.
I mean, I know that Chief Parks here and Mr. Smith in his duty as an officer, I mean, I'm sure this is something that Mr. Parks recalls from when he was chief. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Excuse me. Rhonda's been a member of our Board of Directors and keeps us in touch with the reality of gun violence. We've come this morning to support items 5, 8, 9, and 10. 5 is the 50-caliber that Rhonda was just talking about. It's certainly not a sporting weapon, can actually shoot down a helicopter, and there really is no reason for a private citizen to own such a weapon. It's a weapon of war. On item 8, the, if I could read my own notes, I'd do better here. Let's see. On item 8, this is useful to the Los Angeles Police Department. Ran study showed that people who were actually prohibited from owning a gun are not prohibited from purchasing ammunition. So, this will assist the department in when people register, the police department can trace those people to see if they're on the list of prohibited buyers and go back and recover the guns. The secret compartments, I thought the questions that you asked were highly relevant, and I don't have any answers for them, but I think the concept is good and we understand what the effort is about. And finally, the inventory requirement, excuse me, it seems to me is just a good business practice. One ought to know what inventory one has in one's business, and shouldn't be a really, in these days of computers, a big burden to the owner, and it will prohibit, I think, selling off the books. So, I wanted to tell you that next year, Women Against Gun Violence wants to follow in a tradition that was really begun by the City Council, which was to start the movement to statewide legislation. And in that regard, in the past, the city of Los Angeles was early on in banning junk guns and in ending, and in some of the early ammunition laws and in banning assault weapons. And so, to follow that tradition, Women Against Gun Violence in the next year or two hopes to work with 10 surrounding cities to pass similar gun ordinances to those in Los Angeles. Purchasers from Los Angeles need only cross into Culver City or Englewood, and then these laws are moot. They can purchase whatever they want there. So, I'm hoping that we can count on the assistance of those of you who have friends or colleagues in cities surrounding Los Angeles, that we may make contact with them and work with their city councils to pass similar laws to what you have passed in the past and to which, those which you are passing today.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lane. Legal Community Against Violence, would you?
Sure.
Why don't you introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is Lindsay Nichols. I am a staff attorney with Legal Community Against Violence. We are a nonprofit organization that provides free legal information to state and local governments, government officials, legislators, and activists that want to strengthen their gun violence prevention measures. I'm here to speak today in support of items 5, 6, 8, and 10, and I want to thank the council members for giving me this opportunity. In support of the ban on the sale of 50-caliber ammunition, I want to point out that 50-caliber rifles are military-style firearms used by armed forces around the world, which combine long range, accuracy, and massive power. They are accurate to distances of 1,000 to 2,000 yards, that's 10 to 20 football fields, depending on the skill of the shooter, and they can penetrate armored vehicles, disable aircraft, and damage industrial targets such as refineries and hazardous chemical plants. So, this is not just a gun violence issue, this is a national security issue. Although the sale of the rifles is prohibited under state law, the sale of the ammunition is not. And I should notice, note that a 50-caliber handgun is also available, though it's illegal in Los Angeles, it's not illegal under state law. Reports indicate that this handgun is difficult to control and fires with five times the muzzle power of a .357 Magnum. Bullets fired from the handgun are capable of penetrating the highest grade of concealable body armor, normally worn by law enforcement. I also want to speak in favor of items number 6 and 8, the ammunition vendor license. The, Los Angeles, as you know, requires sort of keeping of records of ammunition sales, and the police department has had great success finding people who illegally possess firearms through use of these records. However, I should notice that, note that the city of Sacramento has had greater success, and one of the reasons is because the city of Sacramento licenses ammunition vendors, so they know who is selling ammunition in the city. During the first six months of 2008, the Sacramento ordinance led to the identification of seventy-four prohibited persons who had purchased ammunition, sixty-one of whom had prior felony convictions. Forty-five searches, fifty-one arrests, fifty-three people charged with a felony, eleven felony convictions, and eight misdemeanor convictions, and a total of fifty-six firearms seized, including seven assault weapons. So, that's what happened in Sacramento, and we're hoping that with this ordinance, we can see similar results in Los Angeles. Okay. And lastly, I want to mention that, I wanted to speak in support of the dealer inspection ordinance, that's item number 10. The Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms and Explosives, which is the federal agency that governs firearms dealers, they reported in 2007 that they inspect their dealers only once every seventeen years, and virtually all firearms recovered in crimes are originally sold by licensed firearms dealers. Because they have a large access to large numbers of firearms, they represent a particular threat to public safety when they do fail to comply with the law. This particular ordinance is designed to help enforce the state law that requires the reporting of lost and stolen firearms by firearms dealers. That's so far largely unenforceable because the police departments simply don't know what firearms those dealers have in the first place. So, now that we have that, once this ordinance is passed, we would have that information, and that would make it possible to enforce that state law. I do want to recommend one minor change in both the ammunition vendor licensing ordinance and also the inventory inspection ordinance. It's simply the phrase that occurs several times, and it's simply changing an "and" to an "or." This is-
This is access and control. The change, the understanding is that the language in the ammo vendor regs, laws, right now it's drafted to say access and control, and you have suggested that it be changed to access or control.
Yeah, that's correct. So, we're talking about employees who have access to and control of firearm ammunition. I think that should be changed to employees who have access to or control of firearm ammunition.
Yes, that's an appropriate change, and it will be made. Thank you.
Thank you for the suggestion, and thank you for the agreement, Ms. Aubrey. And is there any other changes that you, that Legal Communities recommend?
Not at this time, thank you very much.
Thank you for taking the time to study all of them, and thank you all for that, for those comments, and thank you, the Foster family. I have two other public comment cards, colleagues, from the Apartment Association of Greater L.A. I don't know if you both want to speak, or if one of you wants to speak, but you're both entitled to speak, so please come forward, and we'll run the clock on you. So, let's make room for the Apartment Association folks.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee. I'm Jim Clark, manager of Government Relations for the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. As you know, we represent over ninety-eight hundred owners and managers across the city of Los Angeles and the county as well. I'm here to speak on item number four. Item number four, we are in support of. It gives us another tool to keep our buildings safe by being able to evict those who are using illegal weapons and ammunition within a thousand feet of the residents where they are. I'd also like to mention, though, that even though we have these tools, retaliation is a big thing and a scary thing for owners, managers, and also other residents. And so, I would implore you, the committee and the City Attorney's Office, along with us, to try to find other ways that we can act to keep illegal gang activity, drug dealing, those types of nuisances from occurring. We want to keep our buildings safe. Thank you, Mr. Weiss, for your leadership on this particular item, and look forward to working with you in the future. Thanks.
Likewise. And thank you for those comments. Is there anything else that you, that your associate wants to add?
Yeah, I'd like to, just from a personal standpoint, if I could.
Speak into the mic and tell us your name.
Sure. My name is Arnie Corlina. I'm a director with the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, and I appreciate this motion. I encourage it highly. I mean, as a rental property owner, as I take my property management seriously and responsible, but also as a responsible investor, I must be able, to a certain degree, calculate and control my risk, or I must look at it as a bad investment. What you're seeing is an individual who is living in one of my units, not a named tenant in violation of a six-page lease. In spite of the videos showing him coming and going from the unit, $3,000 in damage to the unit, to illegal washer, washing machine installed, they also threatened the young lady downstairs, fifteen-year-old with a handgun. The judge refused to evict. Also here, I have a police report with a group of tenants who, when I initially screened them, had a good credit and job income verification. Within six months, I knew there were issues, such as narcotics dealing, additional tenants, and other issues with tenants that had moved in in violation of the lease. Other good tenants in the building were being intimidated and moved out. There was use of a gun in one instance. I was trying to build documentation to do the eviction. However, they were careful to pay the rent on time, and I was not able to prove anything else. One day, LAPD and probation department came for an illegal search of the tenants, a fight ensued, and an officer needs help call was sent out. Four occupants went to jail, battery on a police officer, lynching on a police officer, and obstruction. When I went to court, the judge said in open court that even though they acknowledged the incident and the illegal tenants, the only reason he was evicting was because I had brought the officer to court. As a director with the AGLA, as you can see by that magazine, I regularly volunteer my time to work with LAPD and city attorney to teach other owners how to control crime and nuisance around their buildings. I worked with the school's safe passage programs at schools such as Locke High, where the green dot safety team has access to my cameras to monitor the perimeter to allow the students to get to and from school safely. As I said earlier, I must calculate my risk. It's not a good risk when I'm not able to evict these type of tenants, and additionally, I would suggest LAPD calls for service would be reduced if you allowed us to evict these nuisance tenants.
You know, thank you for coming, and thank you for-
I hope, I don't know if you can see that or not from there, but-
No, I think we could, and it's a good thing you brought it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank, in particular, in addition to the advocates who came here, I want to thank the many members of the City Attorney's Office. I see a lot of them here. I know you've worked very hard on this, and I really appreciate it. Members, I really appreciate it. Mr. Parks, did you-
I just want to comment on one of the statements made by the apartment owners, and I think we attempted to, when you mentioned the retaliation, we attempted to find a process years ago that would allow the tenants' names that you were using in evictions to remain anonymous until court time.
Yes, and that motion is, I believe, in Councilmember Jose Huizar's office at this time. We're looking at it, working with the city attorney to see how it might work. There's a couple of questions we have. It involves masking the witness with regard to a three-day notice to comply. It would help start the process, getting the police involved. It's at a very, very early stage, but we do need to look at that, yes.
So, you said, where is it now?
I believe it's in Councilmember Jose Huizar's office. It started in Janice Hahn's office, but went with the staff member to Councilmember Huizar's office.
I thought it had gone to a committee. Did it get-
Not yet.
Okay, not yet.
Well, Mr. Parks will certainly work with you in that. That's a very, that's a strong idea. We'll follow up on it. Colleagues, my proposal that we move all the items forward, and if that's acceptable to you, colleagues- With corrections? With the corrections that have been noted. Okay. Item four, I understand, has a new draft, so we need to receive and file the old one. You don't want to say this? We've made the corrections that were noted by LCAV. Anything else, Ms. Stengel?
So, on the permitting issue, I understand that there is some work that will need to be done by the CIO and the Police Commission on setting fees, but I don't think that holds us up in terms of moving this out of here and moving it on. But whatever, and I don't know if I'm right or wrong about that, so let's move it on, and if some other agency pops up and says, "We need to do something," they'll pop up and we'll help them do it. I want to make it very clear that what's, there are two things that are very impressive about this package that is going forward today. One is that it is comprehensive, and it covers apartments, cars, guns, ammunition, you know, soup to nuts. What, the other thing that's impressive is that it's comprehensive in terms of the council members who have worked on it. Mr. Smith, Mr. Huizar, Ms. Gruel, Mr. Zine, myself, I believe Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Parks has been supportive the entire time. The mayor and the city attorney participated in the launching of this. It is, it's the right way to attack these problems, to be comprehensive in scope and to be comprehensive in terms of support. I mean, this is truly a gun control package that has been generated by and has support from the entire city, and I really appreciate the City Attorney's Office making sure that it would all be here comprehensively today, so it could move on to counsel comprehensively. So, and so, whatever procedural things you need to do, Mr. Weiss, go ahead and do them.
There are old ordinances on items 6, 8, and 10. I'm receiving and filing the old ordinances and before the new ones. Thank you.
Sure. When will we be in council?
I'll work with Sue Stengel, leave her staff, pick it in next week, either Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming today. Especially thank you to the Foster family for your bravery, your courage.
Items approved?
Items are all approved.
Let me just-
Mr. Parks?
Just one thing, on number two, it doesn't show it, but this should go to budget and finance, because we got a couple hundred thousand dollar-
I caution them on that.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. They didn't get out of here without, your representative was here.
Thank you all for coming today.
Cautionary note, watch your budget. Cautionary note. Watch your budget.